First item on tonight's agenda is discussion of job positions and the rationale behind the positions. Ms. Leslie Green, Jeff Marks, Thomas Keter and Tom Cool.
I want to make some open remarks to the council before you all get started if I don't, if you all don't mind. Council, we've got roughly six items on this work session agenda. We had a lot in the last work session. We didn't get through them all. I didn't put any of these on there. I didn't put any on the last one. I'm letting, I'm allowing them to go on there, knowing that I think 75 percent of these could be discussed outside of a council work session and, and resolved very easily. For instance, I mean, a flagpole at the pier doesn't seem worthy of a work session discussion. A lot of these don't seem to be worthy of work session discussion, but we'll try to get through them.
Jeff, you can go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Thanks for having me here. Just wanted to briefly discuss our situation at the golf course. I've been in the business now as PGA pro for about 27 years and I've seen all kinds of staffing levels. And although we're, we're doing quite well, we do have an unusual situation at the golf course. I did want to read to you. I wrote a very brief narrative and it, and it puts in detail exactly what our situation is, so I'd like to read it to you if I could. Currently, I have an employee who is, who has filled the position of pro shop clerk for the last five years. This position is a full-time, full-time position and covers the pro shop counter and incoming phone calls. However, he has been utilized to perform many needed duties as an assistant pro over the last couple of years since the golf course has been operating without a true assistant golf pro. In addition to his full schedule of clerk duties, my employee has, when demand and time allows, assisted with tournament and league management, inventory, pro shop stock and custom orders, display and pricing of merchandise, golf instruction for groups and individuals, car staff scheduling, general management of the golf operations in the absence of the golf pro. What is problematic, problematic for the golf shop is that this employee is most always relegated to shop work due to the very busy atmosphere at Quail Creek and it's sometimes, sometimes impossible to give attention to other high priority work. The current employee who serves as a pro shop clerk has over 10 years of experience as an assistant pro at other golf clubs and he's demonstrated excellent ability to me and desire to serve as an assistant pro. He understands the needs of the members and public and I believe he'd be a great asset to, to me and the membership and the public as well in many different ways. My request to you tonight is to simply reclassify this person, my full-time shop clerk, to an assistant pro so we can have time to get away from the shop counter and the phones and assist us at a very busy operation. What I'd like to do is, is reclassify him at the same rate of pay that he currently earns and open the position he's in at a lower wage of possibly 875 an hour, which would save us quite a bit of money as well. Additionally, I have one other employee who has had knee surgery replacement very recently in the last week and he'll be out for 10 to 20 weeks actually, and another employee who's considering knee surgery as well, which may sideline him for many weeks. For this reason, we have an immediate need for one to two part-time shop clerks to fill the void or at least two temporary employees. We're getting into the height of the golf tournament season right now. We've got the mayor's tournament coming up in a week, city employee tournament and several corporate outings and it's critical that we have staffing in place to do the great job we'd like to do. As for myself, my role as head professional is truly more than the title implies. I function as general manager, head pro and teaching pro and manage the pro shop, grill and outside golf operations. As, as you may know, I've been there six to seven days a week and, and I love it. I enjoy the job, but we're doing all we can to fill in to make sure that nothing is neglected at, at the golf course. Quail Creek is considered a very busy golf facility and quite unique in comparison to other public golf operations in our region. Quail Creek received close to 35,000 recorded rounds last year and an additional 2,500 high school rounds, which is considered a pretty, pretty busy operation. I did consult with Mr. Kevin Walz, who's the PGA career consultant for Alabama. He's worked closely with Quail Creek and also the city in, in hiring in the past and Mr. Walz felt that with the operation that we have right now, ideally, a general manager, a head pro and a full-time assistant is needed to get by, which in my mind is not necessary. I find that to be a little bit of overkill, so if we could simply reclassify the position of the shop clerk at the same rate of pay and maybe bring in a part-timer, I think I'd be able to get by fine. Plus, we're finding an added demand from the public and the membership for programming. Our last programming effort that we did in the last month sold out within two weeks and ladies, seniors, children, couples, they're coming to me and saying, Jeff, you need to do a whole lot more than you're doing. We're enjoying it. People are talking about it. We want to see more. So for, in order for me to do so, I would certainly have to have Scott assist me to service the needs of, of these demands and we want to do that for sure, so.
I have some questions for Ms. Green. Do we have the assistant pro job description? Do we even have that in our basket of personnel that we can go to?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And does that, if, if the shop assistant was to be moved into that position, keeping the same rate of pay as you suggest, is that rate of pay for the assistant pro dive with what he's making?
Yes.
Is he in that same range?
It does.
Okay. Those are my questions about that. Counsel, do you have any questions on?
Does it have to be, does it have to be posted?
Yeah, it'll be posted.
But we've already got somebody.
We always like to have positions posted to allow everyone to apply for it and we will see if there's anyone that is more qualified.
The, and then for the, the part-time position, I mean, this is a, I wouldn't dispute your need for it because you would know. The, it's not a budgeted position and you definitely think that we'll get a, a return on the investment there and?
Yes, sir, I do. I, I do. Programming, you know, is one thing that has become an added demand, but with programming, you'll find that more people participate in casual golf, eating at the golf course, maybe participating in, in, in weekly events that we have. And yes, I do. I feel it would certainly take care of it.
So the part-time, that would be, what, 19 hours a week?
15 to 19.
And the PGA consultant had recommended two full-time assistants and you're only asking to move one person to, to a full-time assistant pro and then one part-time?
Yes, sir.
Really, so really the only thing added is the?
A part-time.
19, roughly, worst case, 19 hours a week at roughly minimum wage, which seems kind of low.
Exactly. It is. You know, I'm cognizant that the budget, even though I'm new, the budget has been developed and, and the city has certain expectations based on the adopted budget. So I, I feel I'd be out of place asking for more than I am, but I do want to ask for what I need to get by and do the job we need to do.
So counsel, if you just took 1,000 hours a year, which is what it would be, right? Roughly 19 hours a week? It would be, and call it $10 an hour, it'd be $10,000. So you're basically asking for $10,000.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And in my figures, it was about 10 to 13.
Any feedback on that, counsel?
No, I think, I mean, I'm okay with it.
You're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
What about you?
I have no problem.
What about you, counsel? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So what we would need to do is, we would need to get on an agenda, clerk, and Ms. Green is, we would need to fund that assistant pro at that job grade.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then we would need to add a position of part-time shop assistant. Is that right? Shop?
Yes, sir.
Shop assistant. I don't know if you want to, I don't want to hamstring you by saying you're 875 an hour. To me, that seems even a little less.
Right. I understand.
I mean, you might want to say up to whatever an hour. Give yourself a little leeway.
Yeah. I would say low range would be 875 and higher range would be about 950.
Okay. So up to $10 per hour.
It'd be about pay grade 11 or something.
Thank you.
All right. That it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Discussion of ordinances and resolutions for the civic center and ordinance for the parks and streets and?
There's a couple other positions.
Oh, all right. I'm sorry.
The tennis courts. We had asked for, for two extra part-time people in the budget and didn't get it, but you know, we're getting a lot of requests from, from people who, who want to come out and play a little bit later and with those brand-new lights that we've got out there, you know, we have the ability to do that. But just because the, the shortage of hours that I can, can man the tennis courts, because the, the clay courts have to be locked up when it's closing time and we lock up the building. So basically, what I'm asking for is, is two more part-time people to help cover the hours. Right now, with the four part-time people that I have, I'm able to cover up 76 hours a week and, and I'm, I'm open 83 hours a week. I'd like to, you know, at some point, extend the hours to 90. I'll come back to counsel and ask for that, but you know, first I need to know that I could get a couple more part-time people. And it's, you know, that would come to 116 hours, but even with, with the part-time folks, if, if at one point, you know, one of the ladies that works there decides she wants to take a week off and, and go up north and visit the grandkids, it puts us in an awful bind. And, and with the, the RSA rules we have about, you know, part-timers only working 19 and three-quarter hours a week, it just, you know, it really, really ties my hands. And, and so if I had two more part-time people, I could comfortably cover the hours that I'm going to come back and ask for to extend them. Plus, if, if somebody is out, it's not, um, it's just not such a hardship.
Right. But you've really only got to cover the additional 14 hours, so it really wouldn't be 38 hours a week that you're covering.
It really wouldn't. And I wouldn't have somebody employed that whole time just as an extra warm body in there either. It, you know, I would just be able to cover the hours because there are people.
Since it's part-time, you're allowing their schedules to be flexible.
And it, it does, you know, part-time does work for some folks. And you know, so they can ask off when they want to or, you know, go do what they want to do, but it's, it's, you know, sure nice to have that extra person to schedule around.
And what is that typically the rate of pay for that?
They make, tennis assistants make up till, up to $10 an hour.
So that's, if I just said conservatively 20 hours a week, that would more than cover the 14. That's even a little more than that, right?
Yes.
I'm just, that's for budgeting.
Yes.
Number.
Yes.
So that's, what is that? Do that math, 20 times 52.
10, 4.
Another thousand, a thousand hours, right?
And, and just to throw some numbers at you.
Another 10,000.
Right now, last, within the last year, we, we tracked the, the visits to the tennis courts and the soft courts. We've had about 16,000 plays and, and also just over 16,000 on the hard courts. See, we're talking 32,000 people come through there in a year and you know, our revenue is just shy of $40,000, but you know, I, I think we'll increase that with the extended hours. Because I've got a couple citizens particularly that were emailing me and calling me, you know, they get off work at 5:00, 5:30, get home, spend a few minutes with the family and then come out to the tennis courts to play and you know, we're closing down at 8 o'clock. It, it's just not enough time for them and they're, you know, begging me to stay up until 9. And this is, they have a group of guys that, that come out and play. They won't be there five nights a week, but there are some, some ladies groups as well. And then right along with all that, um, we have, again, these are citizens asking us to sell some small items there at the tennis courts so they don't have to drive across the county to buy a, a tube of tennis balls or some dampeners that go into rackets or some new grips or some gloves, just some simple items like that. Now Tomas, he couldn't be here this evening, but he's already talked to bookkeeping uptown about how that would work with, you know, charging tax and everything and they do the same thing at Quail Creek. So you know, later on in the agenda, I was going to ask about the discussion about this, but you know, that would help bring in some more income as well. It, you know, no, no one's going to make a lot of money off it, but it'd be more of a convenience for our citizens if they were able, you know, show up and not have to drive across the county to buy a tube of balls.
I would ask you just to go ahead and expand on that if you want, on that item three right now.
Well, that, I mean, that's, that's.
Is that it?
I mean, that's pretty much it. We were talking, you know, just the simple things like tubes of balls, grips, strings, the dampeners that, that go into strings, some wristbands, some dry grip or tacky grip, some gloves and ball machine rental.
I would have assumed we already had all that there, so.
We're not.
I think we should definitely be offering that.
I'm not sure why we haven't, but you know, I'm, I'm just, you know, bringing it to you and I know that, you know, Quail Creek does the same thing and has for years and it's just never been done at the tennis center. So I'm, I'm, you know, kind of asking that too and I, you know, that would bring in a, a little more income, plus the extra play that I'm going to get is going to bring in some more income to offset those two part-time people.
And it's more memberships, right?
It's going to be more memberships. There will be.
Comments?
I'm sorry. It was, yeah, it was recommended by the recreation board, yeah.
Comments? I'll start, I'll start with Jim.
I mean, I, I think we ought to be, we ought to be selling that.
Get to or have to?
Get to. Robert?
I don't have any problem with that.
Since I'm such an avid tennis player, I thought they were already out there.
I do have a little concern with the part-time, you know, getting, you know, where, where do we stop with that? If somebody says, well, I want to play till 9 o'clock or I want to play till 10 o'clock.
Well, no, our, you know.
We can't have a part-time person out there just because there are two people to play.
We're not. But you know, you know, I get, you know, I could forward you some of those emails that I get, you know, from some citizens that are asking, they've got a group, but you know, there's also other people that are, you know, disappointed when we have to run them off the courts at, at, you know, 7:30, quarter to 8 now. And, and the hard courts, the, the lights don't, you cannot any longer activate the lights on the hard courts after 10 o'clock. So I mean, you know, they, they can go to the, but you know, the clay courts are such a big hit. And I mean, it's, you know, it's huge, the, the play that they get on those. So they're always welcome to go to and play an extra hour on the hard courts, but you know, most people.
I'm sure.
You know, but they pay, they pay for it. You know, it, it's an expense that they, they pay to play on those clay courts, so. Because there's a lot of upkeep on them, a lot of expense, but it's working out great. Everybody loves them, you know, no negative comments and, and people are lined up and calling in and making reservations every day, so.
I think the main, main thing is, they can't play unless they have workers there, so it's not a choice.
And it, you know, it's, it's, it's nothing that I'm asking for, for the department. It's the citizens, you know, that are asking for it.
No, I, I agree with what Councilman Conyers, Councilman Boone said. I assumed we probably already had this kind of stuff down there. Do they make a vending machine that sells tennis balls or something that would not require any physical upkeep to distribute? If we're only talking about distributing things that are?
You know, Tomas could have probably, you know, answered that better coming from the tennis world. I, I don't know of any, but that's not to say.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know everything that we're talking about carrying, but if it was just tennis balls and, you know, the little dampeners on the rackets.
You know, the gloves and the wristbands.
So that's probably.
You know, somebody comes in, they, you know, they forget to, to bring their sweatbands or their headband or, you know, they forget their glove and, you know, they, they just continue to ask us, you know, why aren't we selling that stuff?
Sure. I, I agree that we should carry some of that stuff down there. I mean, not, not to make it a huge expense because you don't want to overstock it, but you, you know, just, just with the essentials that, you know.
We're not talking about a pro shop to the extent that, that Quail Creek has.
Sure.
By no means. We're just talking about those items that I, that I read.
We have to have people there when the clay courts are open.
Oh, no. Yeah. I'm, I'm talking strictly about the, the merchandise at this point, but I mean, I, yeah, I think, I think we should have that down there.
All right, Tom. I'm here and I think we could authorize the mayor to do what it takes to get you some inventory there and then also for the two part-time positions, I mean, I'm not hearing any pushback on that. And then, you know, it almost like, I almost feel better if we put a number in that budget. You know, we could get that on the agenda, the authorization, hire the two part-time positions, but that would say increase the, the salary budget of the direct department as far as tennis goes by, call it 13,000. And that way, they don't, then, that way we ensure that we don't have two people there working 20 hours a week or 19 and a half hours a week, every week and going over that.
I understand and I'm good with that.
I understand.
So we can.
Sound fair.
Mm-hmm. Makes sense.
So I can try to get it on the next council agenda.
If the clerk says she can get it ready in time.
Okay. All right.
All right. Was that, was that all of them then?
That killed two birds, yes.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that to you. I get it.
Okay. Discussion of the ordinances and resolutions for the civic center and ordinances for parks and streets and/or sidewalks. Charlie Boatop and Michael Stonehouse.
What are you, do you all have this in front of you now? This is a fee schedule within your packets?
Oh, it might be in our.
Yeah, it might be, okay.
Your one note, maybe?
Yep. Let's see. Yes, I have.
Yeah, your last meeting. That's right. We didn't get to it.
I don't think we have the same thing you have.
Mine looks a little different, maybe. Yours is a spreadsheet.
Do not see it.
I don't think we have a spreadsheet.
Boy.
Let's see.
They just got their ordinance.
You said you think it was on the last council meeting, maybe?
Yeah, there was a, there was an Excel sheet that was sent out.
Let's see. Mm-hmm.
Got it. Yes. We'll place this to the door. Okay.
Go ahead and try to start it if you can.
Do you want to go ahead, Mike? Michael, you can start talking about the fees.
What we basically did on our fee proposal and our fee schedules, last time I think when we met, we had some issues because there was no set service fees on these, these services that the city is providing, whether it be Public Works, the Civic Center, the Park and Street rentals itself. Most of the ordinance changes themselves are just housekeeping issues that we need to look at and you guys, I believe, have copies of those, the current and the proposed ordinance changes.
Correct.
You should have 1575, 1576 and 1408-07. And that's Civic Center, Park and Street and?
We can start talking about the different rates.
These are in the, in our work group.
So those are in the, the ordinances, but over the last year or so, we've been looking at the rates and we did the same thing we've done with Parks and Rec and other, other parts of the city and we did the comparison with, like municipalities in our area to look at what we were charging at the civic center and what we found that, again, we're talking about another increase. We kind of touched on it last year, last budget cycle, but we, we hadn't had an increase for the civic center since 2007. And at that time, it was a $110 increase and we've never charged for any of the other services that go with the civic center. Our peers have à la carte services and you, you choose them and you pay for what you use, so the audio, sound, audiovisual, the kitchen, things like that. So we worked on separating this out and you'll, you'll get that as soon as Lynn comes back. So we had our current rates, which you'll see, and then the proposed rate. It's not a large increase, but it puts us more in line with surrounding municipalities. Michael, do you want to say anything else about the rate increases or?
Yes, and like the Park and Street, you'll notice there is only a $50 increase, but what we did with that is we just, we're proposing to drop the $50 electric rate fee that we charge per day for every individual that comes out and rents the park. The reason for that is because when a renter goes out, they're, they're finding that the power is already on, whether or not they use it. Sometimes they're honest about it, sometimes they're not. So the current rate is $150 for four hours of use. Our proposed rate is $200, which would only technically increase it $50 whether or not they use electricity or not.
Michael, the one problem I have with what you're saying right now is you're, you're quoting that as being $50 a day and the ordinance specifically states $50 per rental.
Per rental.
Now, I'm in the rental business and, you know, if I say that I have a $250 deposit, that's not a $250 a day deposit. It's a one-time $250. And, but 1575 quite clearly states per rental and, and the rental, whether it's, because we're going, it's going to come up later tonight, whether it's one day or seven days or nine days, it, it doesn't, it doesn't designate it. It says per rental.
This is a one-time $50.
Says per day.
Where does it say?
Under permitted use, yes, sir, 1575, under park usage.
Okay.
Now, you're, you're correct.
Hold on. I'm talking the electrical. The electrical, your comment of $50 per day for electrical, it specifically says per rental.
A one-time fee of $50 will be charged.
Correct.
We're admitting that.
And that's why we're proposing to omit that.
No, no. What you said, where you were combining it and just adding it since it was per day and just making it $200. But what I'm saying is, is that you're making it per day go up by $50 where, and you're, and you're making it equal, but that's not equal, because that's going up $50 a day.
Depending on if you use electricity or not. Correct.
No. It's not dependent on that.
Okay.
So let's go back.
This is why we have a problem. This is why I'm a little bit taken by the fact that we've been arguing over this ESRT contract when, you know, I, I was, was, was one of the ones that voted for that ordinance and I think the way it's been interpreted has been totally incorrect. For instance, your comments that the electrical and water fee of $50 per day is not per day, it's per rental. But anyway, I hear you. $200 per day, including that. Go ahead.
And then on the extra hours, we didn't propose to change anything on that. The city stage includes setup and breakdown, which we no longer have that, so that would be a strike. Parade permit fee, that permit fee now is currently $2,500 and that's been that fee since 1984, I believe. Barricades, those were discussed before. Garbage services, there's currently no charge for that. Garbage cans, there's no charge. The street sweeping and the cleanup with staff at four hours. And these are recommendations that we pulled from Public Works as well, their estimated costs for these services. These are not.
Hey, I'm going to get all these questions out because they're going to come up tonight. The $75 per hour, is that a, is that a rental fee? Would you say, is that kind of additional rental fee for the day? You have a $200 and then if you go $75 per hour?
Well, currently, yes, sir, it's $150 for four hours, so you get those four hours included in your rental, your base rental.
That's in the rental fee. And then the other, if it was another additional $75, it would be a rental fee.
Yes, sir.
So do you think that that is subject to the 50% deduction for a nonprofit or not?
Currently, currently it is, yes, sir.
Okay. I agree.
And those four hours are credited, whether it be, currently the park is opened at 7:00 AM, it closes at 10:00 PM. That's per ordinance, so it's a 14-hour day on the ordinance. If they're there 10 hours throughout the day, they're credited for those four hours and then it goes over to $75 per hour after those four hours.
Before we get too much into the rates, is there a reason why we couldn't do like just a half-day and full-day for every park and every minute, building or street?
Hey, um, I'm gonna get all these questions out because they're gonna come up tonight. The seventy-five dollars per hour, is that a, is that a rental fee? Would you say is that kind of additional rental fee for the day? You have a two hundred dollars, and then if you go seventy-five dollars per hour?
Well, currently, yes, sir, it's a hundred and fifty dollars for four hours, so you get those four hours included in your rental, your base rental.
That's a new rental fee, and then the other, if it was another additional seventy-five dollars, it would be a rental fee.
Yes, sir.
So do you think that that is subject to the fifty percent, um, um, deduction for a nonprofit or not?
Currently, currently it is, yes, sir.
Okay. I agree.
And those four hours are credited, whether it be a... Currently, the park is opened at seven AM. It closes at ten PM. That's per ordinance. So it's a fourteen-hour day on the ordinance. If they're there ten hours throughout the day, they're credited for those four hours, and then it goes over to seventy-five dollars per hour after those four hours.
Before we get too much into the rates, is there a reason why we couldn't do like just a half-day and full-day for every park and every minute building or a street?
We are not against that at all. Something to streamline it and make it.
So you get it from whatever time you want to set up, at five o'clock in the morning until noon, or you get it from noon till... If you want it from five AM to twelve PM.
Or a flat base rate.
Twelve AM. Make it half-day, full-day. This hour charges just...
It's very, very hard to interpret.
It is, and that's what's in place.
It is hard to interpret because of the fact that you say nobody, it can only be rented once a day.
Correct.
I mean, you're not taking it away from anybody, because it can only be rented that once.
Yeah, it leaves, there are a lot of holes in this, and that's what we're trying to figure out and why we need some input.
I would say every rental ordinance be a half-day, full-day, whatever the rate is, you know?
And include utilities. Make it totally inclusive.
I would, yeah, I would do that, too, yeah.
Because utilities are on regardless if they're used or not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's just another addition to have to calculate.
Yeah, because I don't like the way that we had to go back in and calculate the additional hours because they weren't being discounted for this E S R T rental that's on the agenda. But it's a rental fee, and it should have been discounted. But they, they go in kind of at the bottom of the form, and, and it's...
Didn't get the fifty percent.
Well, we're proposing that they do, but it just makes cumbersome to do that.
It was applied, yes, sir.
And we, we want to figure out what's best for, you know, that contract with the E S R T, that agreement. It's just been very confusing to get there, once we dove into all these ordinances and trying to figure out the pricing.
And again, we're just trying to make it fair and do it right, um, whether it be a dollar or five hundred dollars. Whatever the cost is, it needs to be done correctly, and that's the problem we're running into with the, these events that run more than one day, and there are only a few that actually run more than one day. Most of these rentals are just a one-time rental, so...
But we do have others that are waiting in the wings to do things like this, too, so we have to figure this out.
There will be more, yes.
Yes, and right now, we're at a, it's a hundred and fifty for a half-day and then seventy-five dollars for every additional hour, up to four hours after that. Is that right?
Well, one fifty for four hours, then seventy-five an hour.
After that, right. And so...
So we really ought to do a half-day, full-day, and lump some of these other fees in.
Half-day's a hundred and fifty, and then offer some discount if you just go ahead and book it for the whole day. So it's a hundred and fifty for the four hours, like we're doing now, and then two fifty for the full day or something, so we're not... Well, or you could do three hundred and include the electric or utilities, whatever else we're already adding in there, so there's... I mean, it just, right.
I, I think...
There's too much...
It should be that hard to figure out.
It should be a very simple...
Agreed, yes. But I think what we need to also consider is the time that the park is available to be rented. Right now, it's seven AM to ten PM, so that's considered a full day. That's fourteen-hour day.
Right.
Where do we cap that off at? What do we consider a full day? Is it a full city day? Is it a full fourteen-hour day according to the ordinance?
That's a good point.
Well, and then you got to consider for people to do it multi-days, is if there's, their equipment's there, but they're not there, is it being rented? See, I think that's where you got to be lenient. I mean, we...
If it's two days, then they pay two-day rental.
But if we can't rent it to anybody else...
Well, let's, let's say that, like, for instance, I mean, because this, this theater production's a really good example. Let's say they're only there for four hours that day. Are they renting it for a half-a-day that day, or are they renting it for a full-day that day?
A full day if they're set up.
If they're, if they're there and preventing somebody else from using it.
But if you're only using it for one event per day, max anyways.
Right.
That's right.
Then a half, you could just say, "We're only here a half-a-day."
Well, then maybe we don't even offer the half-day. Maybe, maybe there's just a flat fee for park rental. Because if you can't, if you can only do one event per day anyway, then why even divide half a full day? Just one flat fee for the rental, and here's what it is. And that includes everything, everything we can think of.
All the, all the extras, the power, the water, whatever extra may be included.
Right. Now, I'm not talking Civic Center deal with all, all these extras. I, I don't have any issue with that. Um, but as far as these park rentals are concerned, I mean, the simpler is the better, because, you know, the more you get into interpreting these, these ordinances and what can be applied to who, the more likely somebody is to make a mistake that somebody else gets upset about. And, and the most important thing, Michael, you said it, is everybody's got to be treated the same. And so the, the, the harder these are to interpret, the more likely there's going to be some discrepancy in, "Oh, well, I got charged this when I used it," or "I got charged this," you know, "so-and-so told me they used it, and they have to pay for that," and...
And that's happening, and that's what we're running into.
Sure, I mean, I can only imagine, and so if we can do whatever we can to simplify this for everybody's benefit.
Twenty-three dollars per, or twenty-five dollars per, per trash can and things like that, I mean, would that be all lumped into, to...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, just make it, make it, you know, I mean, I mean, figure out what's, what's fair for the city to get. I mean, I'm not saying reduce it to nothing, but, you know, instead of charging a hundred and fifty and then seventy-five an hour, and then fifty for water, or fifty for gas, twenty-three for gar, you know?
Just here's the fee for rent.
Figure out what those numbers equal and say, "It's seven hundred dollars to rent this park, all-inclusive. That includes everything."
And we have to think about that, too. Like, is a wedding going to produce as much trash as a full-day production?
Sure.
You know, with a thousand people. So I'm just not sure. I mean, that would be a Richard Johnson question.
And this is, I mean, this is just for the benefit of the people that are responsible for interpreting it. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, we, we interpret it this one time, and then we're, we're done. It's the people that are dealing with it day by day by day that are having to look at this and pulling their hair out, saying...
Right. I agree.
"This, this is awful." Um, so, I mean, I'm... I say all that to say I don't know what to do, but I think, I think that's the way we should go.
I still kind of like the half-a-day and full-day, day thing, too. Because, you know, somebody's going to go up there and have...
A wedding.
A wedding on the bluff that's going to last, you know, forty-five minutes, and they, and they have to pay the full day's rate. It's a little excessive.
I, I understand that.
But if you're only allowing one event per day, you kind of...
Yeah.
Unless you did a morning and an afternoon rental, and then it...
And then you, then you have to have somebody to police to make sure the person's off at the right time, and then you, you just...
I mean, I can see just having a daily rate, a daily rental rate that's all-inclusive, everything, but then separately, your cleanup fee. As it's, because that should be a one-time deal.
Well, cleanup fee, as it is now, is not a fee. It's a deposit.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So what is, well, I mean...
Got you, got you. That's how it's being proposed, isn't it?
So...
And historically, we've never kept that, that deposit. We've never had to, yeah.
I guess that was going to be my question, is under what circumstances would we not give it back?
If Public Works was to go out there and, and the park was trashed, they had graffiti, then would you start subtracting from the deposit?
Because they're already cleaning.
Right. They're gonna have to clean it anyway.
Now, like Jack left his college dorm, you know, just red graffiti.
Correct. But everyday usage, I mean, it has to be cleaned regardless of who's out there.
I could have said anybody. I just picked Jack.
Well, I like the idea of simplifying this, and I think it would be easier on Michael and Josh, who have to interpret it or try to interpret it, and you've seen a little bit of that, because we've put together like six different contracts for E S R T, just trying to interpret these ordinances.
Well, now, I did send you an interpretation of that last August, and it was pretty clear as to what, interpretation of it was going strictly by the ordinance. Um, it was strictly by the ordinance. And, you know, with, with the exception of the electrical and the water, which is, which says one time, and it was charged once per day, and then this, the da, the cleanup deposit, you know, you had on there one per day. Uh, and it's pretty clear that should be one. It's like a damage deposit. You pay one, you know, pay one per day.
Y'all updated the contract based on the feedback we got from council last time and sent it to E S R T, right? I mean, and I think we just didn't get to a final signature on that. I think...
Correct.
There's, she stole, we wanted to, she wanted to come before council, I believe, was our final decision on that.
Well, what I would suggest, I don't know if we could go around, and we might, you know, I have five different opinions here, seven opinions, eight, eight opinions, and, uh, I, I think that we ought to pick a one or two council members to work with you and bring something back.
That'd be great. Who's volunteering?
I'll be, I'll be happy to do it.
Awesome.
I'll be happy to do it.
Jimmy, Jay, okay. Perfect.
You're a great candidate.
We would love that. Thank you. And the other rates, so if we can...
Do they have, you have copies?
Yeah, we can go through. Did we get the copies yet?
Yes. Because we'd like to get them on the next agenda.
Um, we'll just start at the top here, if that's okay. Under auditorium, um, right now, our fee includes the kitchen stage and two dressing rooms. Um, this fee was increased back in two thousand and seven, as Sherri Lee said. Right now, it's at four eighty-five. Nonprofit rate is two forty, two fifty. Uh, our proposal rate, proposed rate is four, five hundred and eighty-five dollars with six hour of rental. The nonprofit rate would go down to two ninety, two fifty, or would be two ninety, two fifty. The commercial kitchen, currently, it's inclusive with the auditorium rental, which is not uncommon or common. I've seen it both ways. Um, if they don't use the kitchen, it does come with the auditorium, but they, a lot of people want to come in and use the kitchen exclusively when they're renting the Del Champs room, and they don't have the auditorium. So we're just proposing to have a fee for that use of the kitchen as well. If, if they do use the auditorium, they pay for the kitchen as well if they're using the kitchen regardless. Somebody rents the Del Champs out, they're doing a wedding shower or baby shower, and they want to use the kitchen to cook, then that fee is incorporated. Currently, we can't charge them for the kitchen. The main lobby, um, the current charge is one twenty-five. The proposed rate is one fifty. Right now, the council chambers is fifty. Proposed is one, one twenty-five. Del Champs room, one and two. Those two rooms are the same charge, and then you can see the proposed rate. The reason why the Del Champs room number two is less is because the room is smaller, of course. It's not used that often. The store room, um, historically, that's not used on a, on a large scale, but every now and then it is used. We don't charge for that right now. Some of the organizations, especially during Montegraw, use those back store rooms for dressing areas. And then the hourly rate, currently, the hourly rate is twenty dollars per hour. We're proposing fifty dollars past the allotted six for the base rental of the auditorium. This would not include, this would not include the council chambers, Del Champs at store rooms. This is just for the auditorium itself. The six hours included. Does that make sense?
I have a question about the lobby. I mean, if you're not renting the lobby, how would you enter the, so the center? I mean, you know, is it...
Um, what we typically do is if they don't rent the lobby, we don't charge them for walking through the lobby. If they set up any tables or chairs in the lobby, then they are charged. If they just sign, set up a table to sign in, then we don't charge them a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Well, I'll look through all these real quick and save you a little of time, and I think everybody else probably read through that list real quick, right? And, uh, and they look pretty good to me. And, but what I'd say is, is when we get back to this, you know, the nonprofit rate versus the standard rate, I, I think we somehow need to write into our ordinance that the nonprofit rate only applies to space rentals, not, not these additional, um, not some of these additional things. Like, you've got a thirty-two-inch TV, VCR, DVD for twenty-five bucks. I guarantee you, that's three hundred bucks at the Grand Hotel, if not five hundred. So when you start cutting those down...
You'll buy one for three hundred dollars.
Buy one. I know, and then, that's about what you do, though. But, uh, you know, I, I think, you know, but, but space would be the auditorium, the, the kitchen lot. Anything that's space could be discounted, but the other, the other things, the, the little ancillary things, to me, are... I don't, I don't know that those should be discounted.
The equipment, correct.
That shouldn't be.
The, the, the nonprofit rate currently is just for the, the rooms themselves.
I have one more thing. When y'all are...
Yeah. Do y'all have any comments on any of those proposed rates?
I'd love to see it simplified again, just like, like the other. This is, I mean, this would be a very complicated...
We'll have to look at other civic centers. I mean, it's...
Well, I know a lot of them do this.
This is actually simplified compared to what others have.
Or, I mean, is it worth even putting on there? Too complicated in the sense that, you know, and maybe, maybe when you, I mean, what are, whoever rents the Civic Center fills out a form, I'm guessing.
Correct.
I mean, so maybe we, we draft that form with boxes for these additional items, so that when you fill out, you check what it is you're asking for, so that that's in the...
Yeah. What happens is...
You're responsible for filling it out yourself for what your total fee is, based on what boxes you've checked.
If you're always giving it away for free, then they come and they say, "I want all of this," and there's not enough help either to put it all together at the last minute.
Yeah, currently, this is all-inclusive, like I said, and even if we did the base rate, because we're so used to this already being in the rental package, most of this is already used. Just increase the base rate. That would make it easier.
I, I would make a suggestion that we lump this in with the same as, as the parks rental and have Jay and I volunteering for this to, to work together and see if we can come up with a somewhat simplified... Because I, I'm with you. Why not just lift the, the cost a little bit to, to help include some of these items instead of, um...
And we can show you, um, we can, we can show you the work, yeah, the à la carte.
This one's a lot more complicated. It's really a menu-driven, uh, uh, rental. I mean, because if you took the base, and if you took the lowest of all of that, and you included all that, you're a, you know, you're probably a, I don't know, over a thousand dollars.
Well, I wouldn't charge that much. I would, I'd scale it down. I mean, look at all these...
Who would still be the most affordable in the area?
Let's, the four of us sit down and go over it. It'll be so much fun for you.
Sounds like Jack might want to be on this one.
Well, I, I just, I just, I don't know if you can do it in the, in the, without doing a menu for that.
I don't know if you can simplify it as much as the other, but I think it can be simplified for, again, really, for the sake of the folks having to track this.
Yeah, and with our new website, too, the menu will be online. We're going to make everything easier there as well, so I'm hoping... This just looks much more arduous, I think, than it has to be.
I mean, I, again, I mean, just looking at it, this, there doesn't seem to be really any, any interpretation. This is more of just a maintain, you know, keeping up with what's been asked for, as opposed to where I think the other, the park ordinance, there was a lot of potential wiggle room, and this is just more of a clerical thing, keeping up with what somebody's asked for and what they owe and who's paid what.
That's right.
Which is, is going to be there regardless of who's doing it and what the ordinance says.
There's more gray area in these.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this, this is pretty straightforward. I know it might be more cumbersome to keep up with, but it, it seems at least pretty straightforward to me.
And I have one more charge that's not on here that I want to bring up, and I don't, almost hate to bring it up, because I think it's always a little bit challenging, but that, the entrance to, uh, to the beach area. So we've gone around and around, and some people say, you know, raise it a lot more. Some people say just raise it a little bit. Some people say make it free. So I've heard a lot of different comments, but what I do know is that, um, it, it does cost us a lot to maintain.
But that only applies to...
It's free to fair hip citizens, right?
It's free to fair hip citizens, exactly. So here's what was proposed, was ten dollars for cars. It's currently five for non-fair hip citizens.
Regardless of how many occupants are in the car?
They'll have to put them in the trunk.
I'm just asking...
He had to go there.
Do you want the menu system?
Do you want, do you want, do we need a van, a two-seater motorcycle?
This is just for vehicles or walking?
Walking from three to five.
Walking from?
From, it's three currently, and we're proposing, it's been proposed to raise it to five. And bicycles, correct. Not for fair hip citizens.
Oh, I like what you're proposing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Well, Public Works will be happy with that, I'm sure.
How, how do you regulate if you're walk, you're saying walk-ins are five, bicycles are ten? How do you regulate if they're from the city or not from the city?
We're gonna station council out in rotation, and you're gonna check their license. They're supposed to check in at the gate with their license. I mean, the, the guards know. A lot of citizens do. I've seen them walk through, but yeah.
But Munis, we're trying to put together, um, a module of Munis where you can scan the driver's license, because the barcode on the back has your address, and Munis does identify if you're inside or outside. So that'll be for all of our services.
I mean, there are challenges. Some walkers or runners that forget their license, or, you know, it's, it's, there's going to be a learning curve, I think, to that.
Water to avoid the car check. If they've done that, then they've earned their right to.
People have, people have walked around the fence and, yeah. But at least we know they're not coming with ice chests and...
All right.
Great. Thank you.
So what am I hearing from, uh, Jamie Roberts?
I'd do five and twenty, personally, but five and tens...
That's what I've heard. Twenty is, has come up.
Five and twenty makes sense to me, but as long as it's still free to the citizens.
You agree?
I'd go with five and ten if you think that'd be better.
No, I mean, I've, I've heard twenty from a lot of people. I was just worried.
I'd say five and ten, five and ten, to start. I mean, you know, a jump from five to twenty seems pretty steep.
I like, I like the T W L rate, for those who know it. That is...
You take a poll.
I say five and ten.
And maybe we can get some more feedback through social media or some other avenues from citizens, too.
We can change it later. We don't like it.
That's true.
I hear a five and ten, a five and ten, and some five and twenties.
Twenty, twenty, five and twenty.
I'm gonna reckon saying as high as you can get it.
I think ten bucks for a minivan with six people that are going to cook out all afternoon. That's pretty cheap.
We are getting a lot of complaints about citizens not being able to access the beach, because it's taken up by other people from outside the city.
Well, you got as high as they want over here, so...
The government regulates, the government does regulate.
Looks like the fives and twenties win.
It looks like it.
I'll call credit for every goose you take, will you? For every what?
Goose.
It's free.
It's free if you take a goose.
Free dinners.
So we have to get this on the agenda and formally vote. Right, y'all do. Okay, we'll do that. Anything else?
No, did y'all have any questions?
Yeah, the only thing I had in the, under the Civic Center rental, it has, uh, groups that have events that occur annually, rented auditorium for five years, have a right. Yeah, I'd like to see that for parks as well. If somebody's doing something annually.
I'd agree with that.
For advance booking.
Right.
Where is their cleaning? What do they do about cleaning the auditorium?
Uh, it...
Is that part of the fees?
Right now, it's twenty dollars per hour.
Do it.
We charge them a fee of twenty dollars per hour that they rent it?
No, sir. It's twenty dollars per hour that it takes us to restore the Civic Center back to as it was received as. So that could take anywhere from a half today, half a day to three days, depending on the event and what we have here to work with right now.
And you've had issues with people waiving that in self-cleaning, right, which has been a problem?
They're supposed to, to sweep the floor and clear their tables, empty their trash, but sometimes, you know, the organizations don't, so...
Cut down their number of hours it took you to get it back in, in line, I guess, if they did that.
Maybe do it as a deposit, like you do the parks.
There's a lot of different ways to do it. It's just doing it the smart way and the right way, and where everybody, you know, it's fair for everybody.
A lot more of incentive getting your deposit back.
Right.
And Michael, how long have you been here?
Uh, I've been at the Civic Center ten years. City twenty.
He sees a lot more examples of all this than I have, so when we work together in our small group, we can go through all of that.
Yeah, I just didn't see it on here, so I didn't know where it...
Yeah, I just didn't see it on here, so I didn't know where it was.
The cleaning fee.
Something was going to be up for discussion.
Yes, sir, it's on here.
It's on here.
Mandatory cleaning fee.
Down towards the bottom of the top block.
On the blue, well, you guys don't have color. Right where the C is.
Parks and street.
That doesn't anything to do with civic center.
Under portable, this one, the blue, oh, yeah, they're not colored.
Okay, I see mandatory cleaning fee, I see it now. Thank you.
All right, will y'all meet and get back with us?
We will.
Shaylee, you want to cover your, uh, flagpole discussion while you're here?
I don't know why the flagpole ended up in my department, honestly. Uh, Richard Johnson's going to speak to the flagpole.
I don't know, I found it on a work session agenda, to be honest with you.
I think because it was a non-budgeted item, and so, uh, they needed to come, he wanted to bring it for Joe Walchina.
What's going with the flagpole?
I mean, it's, the flagpole's deteriorated, it's not safe, and we're concerned that it could hurt someone if, if a good wind caught it right, I mean, I've seen pictures of it, Joe's been talking to me about it for some time, and, um-
How much is the flagpole?
$6,540 plus shipping and handling.
$6,540. You would not believe the amount of research that has gone into this flagpole.
I would, I would say, send an email on this next time, it is not a work session agenda item.
Or just put it on the agenda.
We can put it straight on the agenda, yeah.
Yeah.
I think-
Just put it straight on the agenda.
I think Joe wanted to share the, the reasons why.
We had one up at the KFC, but Dr. Booth already got it, so, sorry.
Happy not to put it on the work session.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, it'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, turn that down.
All right, Mr. Johnson?
Good evening.
Evening.
And I will try to be expeditious with y'all's time, thank you. The first item on a budgetary opportunity, and I, I don't know if you've got a copy of this that, that came through with my memo, because it kind of explains it best, uh, we did have originally in the budget for the streets department capital for two three-quarter ton trucks, that was a $65,000 line item, and those were trucks without bloody bodies or beds, um, and that was one of the items that got removed, um, and, um, you know, I was new at that time, and, and it probably was my fault that that happened, but the funny thing is, the two bodies that go with those two trucks that got removed got budgeted, so we're, right below it, you'll see a, a funding on line number, uh, eight for 11,000, and then, uh, on line number 13, uh, there is an appropriation for a half-ton mosquito truck. So, uh, what I wanted to talk to you about and ask your blessing, also on line four, the asphalt reclamer hot box trailer, y'all budgeted, and we have ordered it, uh, and we came in 45, uh, we, the actual cost came in at $45,112, budget was 58, so that we were under by 12, 888. If you would add the $11,000 from the two bodies that we don't need at this point in time, plus the $25,000 appropriated for the mosquito truck, plus the 12,888, that gives you an available budgetary amount for capital equipment and streets of 48,888. Right now, the state surplus has two trucks, one's a 3500 series, one's a 550 series with a diesel, that totaled together with tool bodies already on them, they're, they're work trucks, for a total of 49,275. If you would be willing to reallocate, uh, basically counsel out the mosquito truck, the two bodies, and let us use the surplus on the asphalt reclamer hot box trailer, we would only need additional $387 to get those two trucks with tool bodies. Now, you ask about mosquito truck, here's the good news, emergency management got approved for a full-size truck, he's currently driving a Colorado, which is a mid-sized General Motors product, that only has 53,000 miles on it. That's the perfect truck for a mosquito truck, they like a smaller truck, and since we tend to put 300,000 miles on a truck, it has a lot of life left in it. So, that is what that consideration's on, on, that y'all put on the agenda tonight to reallocate, um, and with a net increase, and the treasurer did look at my numbers and said that they were, he thought, correct. So, um, that's that item.
That's item 14 on tonight's agenda.
I like the way you came up with that.
Did y'all hear me counsel, that's item 14 on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
And, and, and to make you proud of your city, uh, the two trucks we're replacing are both 1999 models, one has 297, 466,000 miles, the other has 311,0097. We've got 19 years of use out of those trucks, um, so, and I will tell you, on the sur, state surplus, the diesel only has 37,000 miles on it, uh, and I think the Ram is 52, so if, we could probably easily guarantee we're going to get about 14 year, good years of use out of them. Any questions about that item?
This says the Ford has 72,000 miles.
All right.
And the Ram has 140,000.
That's, I think that's what he's looking at, buying, not what he-
Yeah.
Nobody has.
I think that's incorrect, but I will, I will double-check that, so, um, but still, if we go 300,000 miles, we've still got a, a good bit of life left in them. The second item, uh, did want to cover with you, as you know, we, uh, had Hurricane Nate, we had damage to our peers, um, uh, we, we scrambled to get, uh, a plan to repair them, and, uh, we got a very good contractor, we've got those repaired. The biggest issue, or combination issues, one, we did not have a lot of accessibility, so we had to do damage assessment from where we could do damage assessment, those, and secondly, the job was written up as a quantity jobs, meaning, for example, for each peer, we had the contractor say, if we had to replace a pile, what is the unit cost per pile? And then, when they got on, on scene, we would determine whether there was damage, how many damaged piles, so we already had a preset cost per pile to pay that. So, some of those quantities were, even from the get-go, we knew were going to go up to some degree. Uh, in this case, um, and I, and I know an email went out to you with a lot more detailed explanation, uh, we may have been a little bit more aggressive in addressing, um, damages, and what was bad, what was retainable, um, and we've had an increase on this, this, uh, job. Good news is, the work is complete. On Orange Avenue, we made sure that, uh, at that point, that we, we only addressed what was, was spec to, to kind of get costs back into control, but some of that was after probably a little bit more work than absolutely had to be done, but I think we got a good value, and if you've been out to the peers, they're, they're really great, and, and I think Orange Avenue is probably going to be something we're going to come back to you, and at least in-house, ask for appropriation to, to at least redeck and do that part that's original equipment out there. Uh, but I, I wanted to give you an opportunity to discuss this before you see an additional appropriation come on the agenda, and I appreciate you allowing me to discuss it. Any questions?
Yeah, you said the work's already done, right?
Correct.
So, they got to be paid, right?
That would-
So, it's no choice, and, we didn't have a choice. There is no choice, we have to pay them, right?
That is correct.
So, how come we weren't notified before the cost overrun, as, as opposed to, uh, prior to the cost overrun? Like you said, they, they, they probably went out and maybe graded some of the structures a little bit more harshly than they should have, and they didn't have to be. What I'd like to see next time is come and ask for permission to spend the money, rather than asking for forgiveness.
I absolutely con-
You knew this was coming, so.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Um, it's not, not the way I like to do business.
Well, and, and I will assure you that, that that's not how I like to do business, and, and, and again, it's, it's 100% on me, and I will assure you that this won't happen again.
Well, it's not 100% on you, it's 100% on the citizens, and fair hip that pay for this.
Yes, sir. Uh, but I got us to this point, and, 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 you know, I'm not going to shut responsibilities there, and, and, uh, you know, I want to make sure that we get what we need done, we want it done right, but we also want to make sure that there aren't surprises like this, and, and, and I am regretful that I put you in this position.
We, we have no choice, counsel, but to, you know, pay for the services, I understand it, I appreciate you, your honesty, but at the same time, I'd, I'd like to say, let's not, let's not see this again until-
Yes, sir.
Let's get the, the cost before you-
Yes, sir.
Before you do the work.
Yes, sir. That is all, any other questions?
Anybody else have a, uh, comment on that?
No.
Well, I appreciate you, thank you.
All right, Richard. All right, Mayor Wilson. We've got a few minutes. Discussion about passing the budget by ordinance.
Oh, well, that, actually, I was going to have, uh, Richard, Richard Johnson talk about this, because this is how Daphne does it, it just would save time during the actual council meeting, and more time for the work session to discuss things that would be on a council meeting, the forthcoming, uh, council meeting, and when he recommended this, I said I would like for him to speak to it, so.
Okay. Welcome back.
Sorry about that.
I wouldn't have got up and left if I knew. Um, just as a concept, and, and again, I think you, as a council, y'all have to decide
how, how you operate, I mean, there's no doubt that, uh, you are the budgetary mechanism of a city operation. Again, what I'm, what I have been familiar with is that the budget, from an operation standpoint, in, for example, in the city of Daphne, is passed as an ordinance, meaning it's a thing of permanent, permanence. And then, the checks and balance are, there are internal mechanisms that mayor is limited to how big of an individual contract, even if it's a budget item, that does, that if it exceeds that point, then there's checks and balances where it comes back to the council for awareness, consult, you know, being consulted on it, and things of that nature. And, and in that sense, for example, the capital budget also was, for capital equipment, was passed as an ordinance, too. Now, one of the things that I know you are always concerned about is making sure the cash flow and things like that are not impeded, so a lot of times, what would happen, and what I'm familiar with, is they would be passed by ordinance, but there would be dates that they could be ordered. For example, if there was a bunch of big expenses, like knuckle boom trucks, garbage trucks, one could be ordered October 1, and the next would have to wait to the end of the, the start of the third quarter. Employees being hired, I would maybe get two new employees in Public Works, one I could hire right away, and one I couldn't hire until the start of the fourth quarter, for kind of a cash flow purpose and things like that. Because I know that's one of the things that y'all have to be wary about, is that, that, you know, you don't want to outspend your current cash flow, or your, your reserves and things of that nature. But I, I, it, it is one of those things that, that makes it probably easier on the staff, and probably takes a lot of, uh, items off of the, just run-of-the-mill items, off of the, uh, agenda and things of that nature. And, uh, you know, I'd be glad to ask questions, you know, I don't know if one system is better than the other, but it just seems that there's a lot of steps to go through here, especially, it's kind of funny, we, we, we worked real hard with y'all, and y'all approved a budget, and now we're turning around and coming right back, and now we have to, all those capital items, you're seeing them again after you've discussed them for a good bit, coming up to it. So, that's just, that's my input there.
Well, I think that we actually do, we pass it via ordinance, and, and, but it, and then there's a threshold that the departments of America can spin, it comes back to us because we have to constantly evaluate where we are.
Sure.
Uh, you know, if times are good, we assume that we're getting the income that we think we're going to have, and so we can order, and I think that the treasurer also would say, "Well, before you guys order these $2 million worth of trucks or heavy equipment, you might want to wait for a month or two until our reserves catch up enough to, to pay for those." So, so while we don't pass dates at which you can order these items, I certainly think that the treasurer would say, "Hold on, you can't order this now, uh, because we haven't allowed the reserves to catch up." But fortunately for the people ordering, you haven't had to worry about that, because we passed the budget so late that we've had a lot of cash built up, by the time we pass the, pass the ordinance. In a normal budget cycle, we pass it in, say, you know, uh, August, maybe, or September, then, then you do have to wait for that money to, to, to pile up in there, but, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, you would take a look at that and say, "Hold on," he would, he would, he would, you know, he wouldn't sign that green sheet if he knew the money wasn't in the budget. That's one reason why it's important for the treasurer to sign that green sheet.
Sure.
Sign, go sign.
Right.
Well, it's a, I think it's passed by resolution right now, and, and that's what, you know, we're not, the checks and balances is, he's not going to sign anything if the money isn't there.
Right.
Um, but we're having to, you know, take the, or the department heads take things that are already approved in the budget, and then having to basically get it re-approved, all of that is looked at by the treasurer, and so, it would just open up more time to talk about things and planning that we oftentimes don't have enough time to do.
Yeah, but, but, but also, I would say, I like having the checks and balances in there, counsel, I think it's important.
You could have a report of everything, also.
I would, um, I could go with something kind of in between.
Yeah, you could have a report every week of everything.
I, I personally like having the additional, you know, when we come up on a budgeted item in these meetings, we spend almost no time on it, so it doesn't, doesn't really drag out the meetings out, it might sometimes make the agenda longer, especially once we pass the budget, you know, 30-something items, 20-something items, but if you've seen, we've kind of cleared that backlog, and then there's, the bud, the, the agendas are starting to get shorter, because of that, the spending measures are winding down now.
It's a lot of time for Lisa, and it's a lot of time for, anyway, it, it's, it's more than just the agenda. I just think that I would love to be able to spend more time on the, on the planning aspect, and, and the budget ahead of time, in a format that y'all want it presented, you know, just to help with efficiency, so.
Any other, any comments, counsel?
If we could do an in-between, where, where, instead of you having to read every single one of those different, um, items, if, if you could just put them all on, in one list, all on a spreadsheet, where we can see, here's the budget amount, here's the actual amount, here's the, you know, the, either the surplus or, or loss, that'd be good to me.
Sometimes we go over, and sometimes, sometimes we're not.
Right, but if you had like one spreadsheet with, with, and could kind of catch, capture all of those under one agenda item, and then we could go through and pull something out if it was not-
Or just address the ones that are over, which oftentimes-
It's a good reminder, I think, to see what's out there for me, and I know it's, it's, but it, it does get lengthy if there's 37 items on there that you-
But like I said, the agenda item's not really a time killer, I mean, if you want an agenda, and you want the clerk to write it up and have seven items in one resolution, well, we can do that, if you want tabulate them like that.
Wouldn't, wouldn't make much of a difference, you don't think?
But, no, I don't, and I, and I don't know that, I don't know that passing the budget as an ordinance versus a resolution changes, changes that, I don't think the thresholds, it doesn't change the thresholds, unless you want to change the, the spending thresholds, or, or say that a budget item, once approved, is, is actually approved, and you don't want another bite at the apple. That's-
Or just to review if it's over.
Yeah. I think with the financial oversight, we, we need oversight, I think that's what it provides us.
Open the discussion, but for now.
Yeah, but it's okay to open a discussion, too, think about it.
If we could simplify, like Jimmy said.
Okay. Was that it?
Thank you.
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
All right. Committee updates real quick. We'll go around the table. Councilman Robinson?
Um, I think I'm, I think I am the liaison to the Arts and Crafts Festival, that exists.
Is that coming up?
It is, it is. There's some anxious people that, that are, they're starting to set up, no, they get to set up in about twenty minutes. So, what do we start at? Is it ten o'clock tomorrow morning?
Uh, it'll be nine forty-five, when I'll mention this in my comments, you know, nine forty-five will be the, the opening, official opening of the Arts and Crafts Festival at the area just to the south of Regions Bank.
So, that's all I have.
Councilman Brown?
Actually, I have none. We, nobody met this, uh, since the last meeting.
Glad you're okay.
Oh, yeah.
And out.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Brown?
Yeah, I've got a few updates. Chuck Zunk, the chairman of the Financial Advisory Committee is here, would like to speak on what's going on with, with the committee.
Okay.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. Just a general overview of what's going on in the committee. We've spent three or four months studying and analyzing the discussion topic of whether or not it would be economically justifiable to contract the police jurisdiction, and I've got a report here on that, that we approved at our last meeting, and I'll pass it out to you in a minute, but before I pass it out, I'd like to give you a little bit of an overview of it. The other projects we've been working on have to do mostly with the utility upgrades. We're, we're coming at a point now where it's becoming appropriate to make sure that we receive input from everybody, from the council, from the mayor and staff, on how best to situate ourselves to fund all the projects coming up, and make sure that it's done in an efficient and appropriate manner. And so that's our, our big project we've been working on, and I'll be sitting down, actually, with a couple of you, and the mayor, and, and the treasurer, in, in this upcoming month, to begin that process. But we've already done quite a bit of analysis work on the, on the assessing the need portion of it, now we're ready to start talking about funding. But going back to the discussion about the police jurisdiction, I'm gonna be passing out to you, after I'm done, two pages. The actual report is the first page to you, with our conclusions and recommendation, and the second page is the discussion and bullet points of the methodology that we use to arrive at our conclusions, and that's actually what I'd like to talk about tonight. As far as how we went about our business, over the last three or four months, primarily Will Newberry and Paige Stelka, who are two members of our committee, have been meeting with a lot of different people, face-to-face, meeting with people from the police department, from the revenue officer, with the mayor, and others on the city staff to gather particular information. And then they've been bringing it back to our regular monthly meetings for discussion and, and developing additional questions and so forth. And we've had Q and A in three of our regular meetings. Staff has attended all those meetings, so we've had a lot of opportunity for feedback. And we've also examined quite a few written reports and data charts provided by the city staff and other sources of information. Some of the examples of data we've received, for example, the staff has prepared, and I think you've probably already seen, a recap of the revenue we, we receive inside the PJ but outside the city limits, that can be used to fund the police department, and currently it's about one-point-three million dollars contribution from the PJ, not included in the city limits, on an annual basis. We've reviewed detailed maps of the police jurisdiction that were provided, and also the mayor at the last meeting brought a very interesting map that I hope she shares with you, that's a good overlay showing not only Fairhope, but also Daphne and Spanish Fort, and the differences in how their city limits are constructed compared to ours. Ours is obviously a much more checkerboard and expanded city than Spanish Fort or Daphne, and probably helps explain a little bit why they have patrolling only inside the city and not creating a PJ. And a lot of other information, some of which we considered pertinent, some of which not. But we also discovered that there is some information that we really needed for analysis that's not available, and not available simply because it's currently not being collected, which is cost, on a cost basis incident related on cost of service inside the PJ as opposed to outside. So that was a key piece of information we didn't have, but I think that there's an opportunity for that to be gathered over the next several months. And then we tried to analyze in several different ways, the information, and the conclusion we came to, which is recapped on the front, is essentially that, at this point in time, we could find no overwhelming economic reason to shrink the PJ down to the city limits. The conclusion is, at this point, because of the information we had available to us, based primarily on what I call a top-down look, which is simply, we have the one-point-three, one-point-four million dollars from the police jurisdiction outside the city limits that's in our budget right now. And in discussions with the mayor and some Q and A, it would not appear likely that any, or at least a major part of that, would be reduced if the, if the PJ were to be shrunk down to the city limits. And she can explain more of her thinking on that than I, but it just did not seem like we could overcome that one-point-three million dollars of revenue loss by shrinking the PJ. Now, the bottom-up approach, which is what we would have preferred to do, we'll have to wait until the appropriate information is collected by the police department. And since you need a reasonably large sample size, that's, being able to analyze that is at least a year away. So, but the most interesting thing we came up with, and this is sort of a thought proposal that I'd like you to keep in, in the back of your mind, is that when we looked at the PJ, and I think you're all familiar generally with the shape of it, it's a fairly identifiable continuous shape, and obviously, if we shrunk it down to the city limits, you're gonna have a real checkerboard, and it creates some service issues for the police department if, if that were to be accomplished. And one, so the, the thought we'd like to put in your minds, for you to dwell on over the next period of time, is, is if we are going to shrink the PJ from its current boundaries, rather than look at an arbitrary, what I would think be arbitrary, shrinking down to the exact city limits, wouldn't it be better if we thought about, what do we really want the city limits to be over the next, say, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, and design a PJ that fits that? And work on the, the analysis, both the cost analysis and the police service capability analysis of a PJ that would represent what we think the city ought to be. Now, that would be more difficult to accomplish, because I think, based on current state law, if we were to do something other than exactly the city limits, we'd have to get special permission from the legislature. But those things can be accomplished if we set our minds to it. So I think that there is a solution there that's better than we have right now, but that solution is not to shrink the PJ down to the, to the exact city limits. So those were our conclusions. I won't read the report to you, you can read it quicker and better than I can, but I will pass it out to everybody, and would be available either by phone or email to answer any questions you might have.
I do wanna mention that the income that we receive, the one-point-three, is, there's about half of the work and time that's spent in the police jurisdiction. So, what we're not taking in consideration is that while we might not be hiring more for inside the city limits, we would have to hire more to accommodate and, and be able to serve almost thirty-three thousand people.
Well, yeah...
Could you patrol that at a different rate?
Well, it...
Or not?
One of the things that the mayor and the committee disagreed on was that the, the mayor presented a report based on the FBI national average of police coverage per thousand. And if, if you actually use that number and apply it, it suggests that even if we shrunk the PJ down to the city limits, the current police staff would still be too few to handle just the city limits. And if you left the police jurisdiction as it is, and applied that national average, we'd have to hire another, I forget what the number was, thirty, forty officers, which to us didn't, it didn't pass the, kinda the smell test, in sense of, did it make sense? It's a national average, I, I didn't see any logic that linked that national average to the situation in Fairhope, so we chose to disagree with the mayor's thought on that. And I'll point out that there are two other items that we did not consider, because they were not economically based, they're really questions for the council to consider if and when it chooses to address this issue. And one of them is that there were some pretty strong feelings on the part of the police department, both at the high level and the, and what I'd call the foot soldier level, that shrinking the PJ down to the city limits would create not only inefficiencies from their ability to service, but also, they had some real concerns about a negative effect on public safety. And I'm not gonna elaborate on those reasons, I think it would be better if you were to talk to the police officials yourselves about that. But we did not weigh that in our consideration, because it was outside the economic realm. And the other thing we didn't consider was a, what I consider a purely political issue of, if we threaten citizens outside the city limits but inside PJ, that we're gonna cut back the PJ to the city limits if they don't annex, is that an appropriate lever to encourage them to annex in? And I don't even wanna address that, that's a, that's an issue.
But I will, because that was part of the discussion in the meeting, and the discussion was that none of this would be done without communication, and that is part of the land use plan too, is part of the communication outside the city limits. But everything about this is addressing it as a plan. It shouldn't be ignored and think that we never have to address it. Now's the time to address it, even if a decision happens in two years. Just to simply say that, oh, we're okay, because we talked to a few people, is not the way we approach this, when public safety is paramount. And I think that we do have to, it's not an open and closed case, it's something we need to start looking at now, to plan for the next two years. And filling in the holes is, is part one. And, you know, comparing what other municipalities have, I also gave about five different examples of statistics based on how many sworn officers should we have per thousand in population. I said, I don't know that number, I'm just trying to gather data. None of this was ever about a decision, or a hard decision, but we're not, right now, we're doing our maximum jurisdiction, you know, when should we plan on a mile and a half? I mean, it just should be a plan and a discussion. And that's basically how I've always presented it, and it's something that the council, you know, we should, we should definitely start discussing and putting a timeframe together on how we're gonna fill in these holes.
All right. Thank you very much. Give me, give me a call if you have a question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, you have...
Yeah, I've got one more. The Bike Ped Committee is working with the Baldwin County Trailblazers, and have the free valet behind the museum for the Arts and Crafts on Bancroft. The Bike Ped Committee also said they support the reverse angle parking that will be coming soon to Johnson Street as a test area, they'd like to see it at the Portico Development too. I know that's been thrown around, I don't know where, where it's landed with, with that development on Ferry Bay Avenue, but they think it's a good idea there as well. One of the bigger things is usable sidewalks in downtown area, especially with the new section placed right across the street here. The sidewalk, as you come down in front of where Buck's Diner used to be, and then in front of the little kiln there, the sidewalk zigzags over to the building line at the antiquary and Ravenite, and then it comes back out to the street. So, people either walking behind parked cars, or they're trying to get over to a sidewalk at the building line, so, and there are several other places like that in town, they like to look and see if there's ways, ways to address it. That's it.
Councilman Conyers, a couple of minutes?
Really, just the library board meeting canceled for Monday night, no other updates at this time.
Airport Authority, they had a meeting, but went into executive session on Monday. They are courting a, a fairly large business to come to the airport. They are hoping to sell some land there, I don't know how much of that I can disclose right now, but that's just in the works, and I'll let you know more as soon as I can. Let's go ahead and adjourn, and convene here in about five minutes.